Thank you for coming, please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. And thank you all for coming this evening. Next item on the agenda is a moment of silence. Please join me. Moment of silence for Joseph Nicoletti, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District, and Bruce Aristal, also a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Presentation, student survey results. Mr. Keegan and a lot of students. Well, you're just getting up to run the show. And that, you want to?
So, well, Mr. Keegan is getting the slideshow up and the group is getting organized there in line. This is the second year that we've conducted an annual student survey and it was for all students at both middle schools, North Syracuse Junior High and the high school, completely developed, run, and presented by the students. So I'm not going to say anything more at this point, I'm going to turn it over.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy O'Shott.
And I'm Nia Mitchell.
And we are the co-presidents of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. We're here to present the results of the 2017 student survey. Our motto is, "We may be few, but we represent you."
The Superintendent Student Advisory Council is a group of strong leaders from each school within the North Syracuse Central School District. We meet on a regular basis with the superintendent of schools, miss a net speech. The council reports individual school issues to the superintendent and work on ways to find and solve them.
We are presenting this year's survey results in order to demonstrate the improvements made in our schools and the topics that still need improvement.
Hello, my name is Cassidy Hirsch, I'm going into 7th grade at Gillette. I am also the head representative of Gillette Road Middle School.
Hello, my name is Riley Koala. I will soon be a freshman at the North Syracuse Junior High School. I will also be the secretary of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. District-wide, eighty-five percent of students agreed or strongly agreed that the faculty of the North Syracuse Central School District is courteous and helpful. But that also means that fifteen percent of students think that the staff is not courteous or helpful. This information is useful because even though most of our staff is available and approachable for students, there is room to improve the way our district and community interacts with one another.
My name is Corinne Freysinger and I'll be going to 6th grade at Raxborough Road Middle School.
My name's Emily Bradley and I'm going to 7th grade at Gillette Road Middle School. Question number four states, "I feel welcome at my school." Eighty-two percent of students district-wide agree that they feel welcome in their school. Eighteen percent of students say that they don't feel welcome in their school. These results are about the same results from last year's survey. Many students might not feel welcome because of the atmosphere of their classrooms or because of problems with other students such as bullying.
My name is Nia Mitchell and I'm a senior at Sanas High School. Question five is, "I feel connected to my school." While sixty-seven percent of the respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement, thirty-three percent still disagree. Because of this, we should try our hardest to find ways to create a community where more of our students can feel connected. We can do this by creating more diverse clubs, organizations, and activities. Question number six is, "In what ways do you participate at your school?" Many students gravitated towards friends, academics, and school events. Personally, I think an important aspect we should work on improving is having a good connection with teachers and staff. Because from my experience, this can heavily influence how much you would like to participate in many of the other options.
Question seven, "I believe that school administration works their best to solve issues students may have." While sixty-five percent of students agree, over one-quarter of students do not believe that the school administration works their hardest to solve problems.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Damon Vilnav and I am a freshman at the junior high school and I will be the head representative for the junior high school. Question eight states, "I believe that other students in my school are good role models." Forty-one percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed. Fifty-nine percent of students did not agree with the above statement. Therefore, the majority of students do not feel that other kids in their school are good role models. In order to make students more apt to be good role models, we should create more positive opportunities at the elementary level.
Hello, my name is Olivia Sada. And in about a month, I'll be a freshman at the junior high. And question nine states, "I learn best as ...," check all that apply. More than seventy percent said they learned best visually. More than sixty percent said they learned best from examples, but the least effective way that they said they learned was listening to a teacher tell them the subject. About ten percent of the category "other," which was the last subject over here, forty-two percent mentioned learning kinetically, which is the equivalence of saying fifty-one out of the one hundred and twenty-one specific written responses, including the most effective way of learning, was hands-on or by experiencing it.
For question ten, eighty-two percent of students strongly agreed or agreed that their teachers present information in a way that they clearly understand. But this also means that eighteen percent of students don't clearly understand the information the teacher is giving them, which can overall affect their education. This information could be helpful for teachers to make sure they are presenting their content in several ways so they reach all of their students.
Good evening, my name is Giorgio Rotta and I am entering 9th grade at the junior high school. Beginning next year, I will receive the privilege and responsibility of becoming the vice president of this council. Question number eleven states, "I clearly understand what is expected of me as a student." In both 2016 and 2017, ninety-four percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed district-wide. With the transition into 2017, we have kept and must continue to maintain a slim percentage of respondents who do not agree with this statement. Question number twelve, please. Question number twelve reads, "Technology is available in my school and helps me with my learning." The survey given in 2016 resulted in sixteen percent of respondents disagreeing or strongly disagreeing with this statement. In 2017, though, only ten percent of those who took the survey did not agree with question number twelve. This improvement indicates that we must continue to expand and utilize technology in a proficient manner throughout the classroom.
Question number thirteen states, "I frequently use the district website to get the information I need." Fifty percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement. That means half also believe that they can't get the information from the website. It was brought to the attention of the council that there will be a new website coming out very soon, so it will be a good gauge to see next year's results and compare the two websites.
Good evening, I'm Sarah Wicks and I will be going to Dartmouth in the fall. I am no longer in this district. But, okay, question number fourteen was, "I am aware of events and activities that are happening in my school." And seventy-five percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. However, there was a big change from last year in most of the schools. More students agreed or strongly agreed that they were aware of the events, so that shows improvement. But there's still a quarter of our students who are not aware of the events and activities, and especially in a school our size that we tend to lack school spirit sometimes. I think this is a very important thing to focus on.
Hi, everyone, my name's Liam Wank and question number fifteen and sixteen focus on safety in school. Safety is important because it's just pretty ... wait, I'm sorry. Safety in school is important because a student that feels safe is more willing and more likely to take in and retain information. In terms of question number fifteen, seventy-eight percent of students felt safe while attending school and only eight percent strongly disagreed out of the twenty-two percent that actually disagreed totally. In terms of the bus, eighty-one percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed to the above statement. And pretty much every single person who answered the question, about ninety-eight percent of survey takers answered these two questions.
Hello, my name's Megan Johnson and I'll be going into 8th grade at the junior high. Question number seventeen was, "I know exactly what to do in an emergency." District-wide, eighty-eight percent of students agreed that they did know what to do in an emergency situation. But while looking at the individual school's data, I noticed that in the older schools, the percentage of students that agreed decreased. From the middle schools to the high school, the percentage of students that agreed decreased by eleven percent. This shows that the staff at the older schools could find different methods of communicating to the students what to do in emergency situations.
Hi, my name is Jenna Sherry and I will be a junior at the high school this upcoming year. Question eighteen states, "I am given a reasonable amount of homework each day." Sixty-two percent of the respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement. That means well beyond a quarter and actually almost a half of the student body don't think they are given a reasonable amount of homework. Homework has been talked about a lot lately in the district, so I really think question eighteen should be looked at more closely. Question twenty states, "My teachers provide information about my grades for me to access online." Eighty percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement. Although eighty percent seems like a lot, which it is, you have to keep in mind, there still is twenty percent of the student body that doesn't get the information they need online. I personally think the online gradebook is really helpful and helps me to be the best student I possibly can be. It's open for parents and students to check in on grades, so I find that to be very helpful and I think everybody should have this wonderful opportunity.
Question number twenty-one was, "I feel comfortable raising my hand to ask a question." And seventy-four percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with that. This one is very alarming to me because that means twenty-six percent of students disagreed and don't feel comfortable raising their hand to ask a question. And I believe that's like the core part of learning, it's such a basic part. And if you don't feel comfortable raising your hand to ask a question, you're never going to fully understand. And we also saw in the data that as you got into the older schools, more and more students disagreed and it was a lot higher of a percentage. And so that's definitely something we could work on in the junior high and high school.
The next question is question number twenty-three. Question number twenty-three states, "I feel comfortable expressing my interests and opinions at school." Sixty-seven percent of students agreed or strongly agreed with this statement. That means a third of our students don't feel that they can express themselves at school, which is very concerning. We need to work on the environment at schools and create a more accepting environment.
Question twenty-five, "I find that my teachers are generally available to help me." And eighty-five percent of students agree with this statement. This shows that teachers are willing and they are helping students and this is a great percentage, so we're doing very well in this area.
Question twenty-seven states, "I like the after-school activities offered at my school." Seventy-eight percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement. Even though seventy-eight then again is kind of large, it is close to a quarter of our students that don't like the activities that are offered at the school. And after-school activities and clubs can really shape you and it makes you feel like you contribute something special to the school and it connects you more to the school and your peers. And in addition, a lot of times, being involved in extracurricular activities makes for better academic grades. So I think we should open up clubs like more and make them more noticeable, whether it be by having club fairs or advertising them more, or just creating more clubs in general and definitely keeping the ones we have now.
So, where do we go from here? The Superintendent Student Advisory Council will do our very best as a team to help put in motion changes and improvements suggested by the student body, along with the help of the Board of Education and North Syracuse Central School District employees. Thank you all for your time and for your consideration, but before we go, are there any questions to conclude this meeting? Sure.
First of all, I want to say what a fantastic job you all have done. You must be so super proud. And I loved how you didn't just read the survey questions and the results, you gave a recommendation on how to make it better. And that's important. And we have a lot of information here to go over and a lot of suggestions. My one question was about the homework, that students didn't feel they had adequate homework. Was it that they didn't feel they had enough or they felt they had too much? Was that part of the question?
Well, our survey didn't contain those answers. I disagree with people thinking it is an open-ended question.
And Sarah, you will always be a part of our district. No, and thank you for your leadership.
Are there any other questions?
Somebody, whoever did the one on the feeling comfortable to raise your hand. Elliot, I guess those two can go hand in hand. You said there was concern. Just wonder where do you go from there, because there's a couple of people that can happen. Like you said, I mean, that's one in three. But I'm gathering you didn't drill down that deep, but that's ... I thought it was interesting, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I thought it was interesting because we had the one about teachers' health rating, which was a very high rating, so to engage. And noticing at the higher grade levels, it may become something about peers or the adults. Interesting, I'd love that.
That's a great plan, I'm sure next year we'll be able to specify, you know, what you just said in a separate question that follows up on that one question. Make sure. Anybody else?
Question, do you guys in your survey include comments or is it just multiple choice?
Yes, after each question, we include a little box that says any comments pertaining to that question, so they could add that. For one question, like Sarah said, how you feel comfortable at school or how you connect to school, there was a separate question pertaining to specifications and how they feel connected to their school. We've got, you know, maybe a hundred of those answers written down in the survey in our results, so yes.
So that must be really useful and kind of some clarification on some of those questions. Do you guys get input from anyone other than yourselves on what questions go into the survey?
Based on the questions that we asked last.
Anything else?
So before you sit down, I just have to say a couple of things. First of all, I'm incredibly, incredibly proud of all of you, you know that. Just to kind of ... the student survey a year ago, when we did it for the first, they looked at the community survey and decided it was their decision and their leadership decided, let's try to parallel and ask similar. And as they mentioned, some of them we dug deeper into, give them some ideas now for how to dig deeper the next time we do it. Under their leadership and their ability to convince their administrators, we had much larger turnout this year. Every student in the high school took it on Chromebooks, thank you, Mr. Keegan, during their phys ed class. So I think this year's results are even, you know, much more accurate. I also want to thank Sarah, who was our valedictorian and our grad advisor, even though she says she's no longer part of the district, you will always be. And Jeremiah Butler, who was co-president with her this past year, was unable to ... commitment, but he was very instrumental in putting this PowerPoint together. I want the board and the community to know, I treated them the same way I treat my cabinet members around this table. Then we had a meeting, I gave them the information, they analyzed it, they worked on it, they divided up the questions, they put the survey together, and they decided what the important points were. Top it off, many of you know I was at jury duty today, so I wasn't even here when they ran through this, so I'm amazed. You guys are wonderful and I look forward to another great year with all of you.
Next item on the agenda, we have updates on the capital project, proposed capital project. Mr. Keegan, Mr. Ward. If you kids need to leave, I know you ought to get home and start on your studies for the fall, so if you want to head out, that's fine with us. Thank you again for coming, appreciate it, appreciate it very much. Some are reading, thank you. Some are reading. Thank you. Okay, John, you're going to take the lead.
I am. Before we get started, we've got some new board members here, so if you want to introduce Paul Johnson from King King.
Well, thank you very much, I'm so glad those students were here. I had a certain level of anxiety that I was showing up at your meeting in shorts here. So I'm glad I'm not the only one presenting to you in shorts.
You're not alone.
Yeah, you should. Well, I just wanted to say, so I raced right over here, I was at the North Syracuse Scholars for Scholars Health Tournament at Lake Shore where King King was a sponsor. We had a team there, really enjoyed ourselves this afternoon.
I didn't hear you say winner.
We are not the winners, we are in the middle of a pack or so.
Okay, alright.
We are five under, so we felt like that was a good accomplishment. Thank you very much, thank you. So, alright, so without further ado, I think you have all had a chance to go through this presentation and I look forward to answering any questions you have, I'll cover each slide again.
Before Paul gets started, I just want to say John Cole was unable to attend tonight. He did wish that he could be here, but he didn't prior to the ... John has seen this presentation, John, have I?
Great. Alright, so the floor plan, I just wanted to put it up here briefly, we've talked in detail about it in the past, I just wanted to say where we are in our development and the whole process is what we call the design development phase. So we're just coming to the conclusion of that now. We've spent a lot of time integrating mechanical systems, structural systems, et cetera, into the floor plans. And so there have been no significant changes since the last update, so I think that's an important thing to point out. The other piece of this that I wanted to just draw your attention to is that we spent a series of meetings, meeting with the district's security consultant, Armored One, they've gone through this in detail, they're in the midst of doing an inventory of the entire district and writing reports on all, so they thought it was great that they would be able to provide some input on the building before the design was done. They're very happy with where we're at and have had no significant changes that we had to incorporate. We will continue to utilize them as we work through this and some more details that they would be involved in as far as types of glass and other types of doors, more details that we're quickly starting to approach. So that's the ... yes, go ahead. Oh, yeah, so that is, you'll see there's a series of areas in the hallway where the hallway gets a lot wider. Those are just breakout or small group areas. Those lines there, we haven't fully decided what that is. That may be sort of a built-in seating area, it may be loose furniture. Right now, it continues to be a placeholder until we really get to that level of detail to figure out what is most useful for students there.
To add to that, I would say, think of something like ...
Mary, you also were on the visit to Pine Grove and you remember those little ... spoke out and worked in the hallway.
Okay, so I hope no one spent too much time trying to read these graphs and charts that I threw in here. They're really here just as an example and we've actually produced about, you know, it's probably about twenty-five different reports that we've run. I wanted to talk briefly about the energy model that we're using. So right as we started the project, our mechanical engineers created this model and that's a little picture of it sort of on the bottom. It's very diagrammatic as far as the form and what the building will look like in the end, but the tool is very detailed in its ability to calculate energy use and even things such as daylighting within classrooms. And so we are using it to really fine-tune the level of insulation in walls or the types of windows we're using. We even today had a debate about the total height of windows, so there's a lot of give and take and it's a really interesting process. As soon as you start to make windows really tall to increase daylighting, which would then require less artificial lighting and the power that drives artificial lighting, then windows are just naturally less efficient than a solid wall. And so there's a lot of give and take and there's really no way to truly fine-tune this without a tool such as this. And so we're really excited to use it on this project. It's something that we started to use on Smith Road. This time, what we learned from Smith Road was there was an outside consultant who managed it and really just couldn't keep the pace that we were moving at by having it literally be our mechanical engineers who own it and run it. We can have these conference calls where we just start tweaking things and a lot of back and forth. And so I just wanted to point out that it's a great tool, we're using it to really fine-tune and dial in this building in every possible area so that it's as energy-efficient as possible. One of the things that we all targeted together, John Ward has been great, he's been integral and really is embedded in our design team and attends all coordination meetings with engineers. One of the goals that we set out after was to have a building that could be zero net energy, could be officially designated as a zero net energy building. What that means is that the amount of energy that the building utilizes to run, that that energy could be offset by onsite production through something like solar panels or similar. So our goal through this project is to at least have you at a point where if you were to add solar panels later to another project or another funding source is probably the best way to do it, that the solar panels you would add to the site could offset everything that this building needs. that this building utilizes. And the way to do that is a really tight, as we call it, tight envelope, really energy efficient envelope, and then we size all of our mechanical systems accordingly. We've spent a lot of time, I think it's the next slide here, spent a lot of time, literally months analyzing different mechanical systems, and we vetted, I think, five or six different approaches to how the space could be heated, cooled, and fresh natural air can be brought in. So, there's easily five different ways that that could be accomplished. We really worked through it and found what we felt to be the most efficient. At the same time, we really wanted to make sure that we're giving the district something that is easy maintenance-wise and really has a durable life. And so, there was actually a mechanical system that technically could be slightly more efficient than where we ended up with, but only has a lifespan of 20 years. So, we're thinking this building obviously needs to be able to go well past that. So, mechanical wise, we didn't really intend to dive into the details here, but I'll just briefly say, it's a very similar system to what was at Smith Road. It's a displacement ventilation system. I may have talked about this briefly at previous meetings. The intent is to bring air, fresh air in at, basically at seating or floor levels, and then that fresh, and you can bring it in at a lower air volume since you're not trying to push it down from the ceiling. That obviously is great from an energy perspective, lower fan speeds. You can actually bring in air slightly cooler, if its heating system's slightly cooler than if you're trying to force it down from the ceiling. It's a less drafty space, and when you just think about a mixing system, which is mixing the air and everyone's germs together versus a displacement system, which the air comes in, is slowly heated by everyone's body, rises up and exits through the ceiling, it's better air quality, indoor air quality system than our traditional systems. And it's certainly a system that you have at a multitude of buildings in North Syracuse, so not a new concept.
Yes, to tag on that, that we were first. Good first attempt, we learned a lot from. Better attempt, and now. Talk a little bit about, more about the mentor. That is our goal in construction. We have. Paul said, the intent is that somewhere in. Right now, as a district, one of our. And it's not. Come in and put those systems in there. Something would just keep our idea. Technology gets better or something. Nope, nope, that's just a, I mean, added caution, no, you're going. Most efficient building we have. I'm bothered at the end. When we used to do the high school building in the district, was what, I think? Bear Road was probably close to about 5, 26. He added things that we're doing.
Are we going to have those same type of vents in the classrooms that we have at Smith Road?
I'm glad you asked that. I was going to tell you that.
I know that's going to be asked.
No, in the history there, remember, we tried to save the walls and the interior to save some money. When we got in there, we just couldn't do it, and at that point, we were just.
That's right, I tried to, and I realized it's not great quality. I tried to give you a picture. They're going to be more integrated into the wall, and they'll probably be right underneath the windows. You won't have those large sort of half-barrel, you know, four-foot-tall obstructions in the room, so. Yes, we're always learning something.
Question, would the air come in low, is there any? Not a traffic in front of Bear Road or anything like?
Oh, no, no, it's pulled in. These units are actually, because we have to do some additions, it looks like our mechanical room is. He's been under a certain set. It's going to be tremendous for life.
Our mechanical engineer keeps telling us we're going to see savings when we did that, just in the efficiency of duck work and the layouts. We're really excited that this building has a fairly dry crawl space that we're able to use. Run all that duck work down below. Layout of it really is efficient. They've, I've really been happy with how much time they've spent thinking about just ways to standardize everything from duck work sizes to just the efficiency of the layout and how it sits within the building. So, with that said, I'd like to move to some site work discussions. I just wanted to give you the overall site plan first off, and then we can zoom in. Just again, the initial steps on this site, very difficult site to work with just because it's sort of landlocked by other properties. There's always the traffic issue with the parent drop-off at the front of the building and cars sort of parking all over the parking lot and kids walking in between cars at the same time that buses are in there as well. So, the first maneuver was to, really the only place we could put a bus, dedicated bus drop-off area was to the east side of the building, to the, as you're looking at the slide, the right side. So, dedicated bus loop, that will really free up the current parking lot and the curb where the buses currently park, really frees that up for parent drop-off. They'll be dropping kids off directly on the curb, they're walking, dropping to the building. Staff can be right along that sidewalk and usher kids into the building. The other piece, you know, I'm going to zoom in here. So, the other, the other piece of that is, it certainly provides a lot more curb edge for cars, and we're seeing this everywhere, and it's, honestly, I have this discussion in every district. There are so many people driving their kids to school these days that we just, even districts where we've previously attempted to provide parent drop-off areas, they've sort of outgrown that. And so, Bear Road and just the natural layout of the parking lot and the curb, hopefully will, I'll use the term future-proof you enough, that you have enough spaces where parents can pull up and continue to circulate out of the site. So, we're not doing a small loop like, say, Smith Road as a fairly small student. In comparison.
Which creates. Kind of this to the board of. Kind of worked through three or four different kind of. Does provide us that separation. Yes, I think the next slide you'll see now, so.
Oh, sure, if I go to this.
You see here, so the buses will shed around, turn around. Day at the end, so once the buses. This slide, you also see one of the concerns, John Cole, when we looked at him with walkers. Certainly, right now, they come down. Walk into the parking lot and still going to have to come down there, that's where the. But again, I think, you know, certainly, we have a lot more, more, you know. Carments on the west. There's not much.
People trying to make a left both buses and. Hard road to turn onto, right?
Right, well, buses will be alright. I think Matt has them all, none of them turn left out of there. Parents, you know, depending on the time of day in the morning. They'll say law enforcement does a really good job, usually once or twice a month, somebody sitting there. So, I don't think it'll be that bad. They, 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 they know.
Yes, they have that problem today anyway, so.
Yes, I think that this, you know, talking with John and everybody, we thought it was good, we don't have the kids coming up anymore, we don't have the staff out on the burning line, we can kind of control it. A safety standpoint does solve a lot of those problems.
So, I think we had, I told you the last time I met with you directly in March that we would come back and have addressed this issue. So, having vetted, as John said, four or five different, all viable design solutions, this one seemed to address all the concerns, and we've looked at everything from how do you clear snow, where do you pile up snow? So, all these things we realize are important to address. Yes? Yes, so, thanks for pointing that out. So, yes, so in, so in rethinking how buses and cars interact on the site, a crucial piece in making all that possible was realigning the entrance to the building. So, right now, I'm just going to use this mouse. So, right now, you enter, there's a canopy that sticks out over here, and you enter right along here, right? So, we're relocating the entire main entrance function to the, to the end of what is currently the kindergarten wing, if you're ever in the building. The main entrance now is actually, you can enter from this side, the side I'm sort of shaking my mouse at on the left. That will be the entrance throughout the day, so if you're a parent that stops or any other visitor to the building, you would enter on that side and be buzzed in, the same process as other buildings in the district. The side on the right where the buses are that you asked about, George, that side will be open specifically for bus drop-off and pickup only.
Right, and you'll have another, they'll have two access, if you go to the next. They'll still, they'll be able to come in down by the gym. They'll use both those for arrival displacement.
In climate weather, they won't have to walk up.
Sure. Sure, so there's certainly our.
Will that sidewalk be covered at all, or will you just walk the sidewalk in front of all the lights?
Yeah, so there is a canopy that comes out. We're not bringing a canopy all the way down through, but there is a canopy at the main entrance. I would, though we haven't gotten to this detail yet, it's something that you certainly have throughout the district with heated sidewalks, just to help keep them clear. So, we can talk through all those details as we get into that level of design. So, down on the site, this slide here is really to talk more about the student spaces. And so, we're really excited about the courtyard and the ability to create sort of outdoor teaching areas or outdoor classrooms. And so, the courtyard has a series of different spaces. It's not just sort of wide open like Smith Road. We're really trying to think about creating zones within that courtyard through the use of berms and plantings, little breakout areas for classes to go directly out onto their, onto the courtyard, excuse me. And really, it's all about sort of the student discovering the space and not just walking out to the courtyard and it's one big lawn, but it's more about being, you know, you go around a corner, excuse me, you go around a corner and you start to discover things. So, this site is so, the wetland is so tied to the building and so integral to the building. We're really thinking of ideas on how to literally, how do we tie that into something the student understands while addressing another issue or design item on the building? So, a real simple item is stormwater. So, we need to address all the water coming off of your roofs, and where does that go? And so, we're even thinking about interesting ways to have rain gardens, which we've certainly done before, but how do we take that further? Maybe there's literally a small river that, you know, when it rains, you see the water move through the site and eventually go out into that land. So, we're working through how to practically do all these things, but you can sort of, I just want to give you a sense of the themes we're trying to integrate.
So, if you looked at this, that this kind of has the water thing, if you were at the top, that's kind of where the water would be. It was kind of the water traveling. Trying to just figure out how to make that.
And I, the next couple of slides are just pictures of the elements in here. Mary, going back to your question, so about the bus turnaround, I just wanted to point out that it requires a lot of pavement to get buses to turn around, and we also have to address fire trucks and their ability to turn around in here. So, we do end up with that large paved area. Again, that, this whole area is gated off during the school day when buses aren't onsite, and so, we're showing some basketball courts and all there. So, we're really looking for ways that PE classes and students during recess can use that paved, that sort of hardscape, and it's right next to the playgrounds, which are these zones over here.
I'm taking by the time we get here, you're going to have. I wouldn't be surprised by. Forty.
What are you doing with that? Is there a lot of there, or?
Well, I wish you wouldn't have brought that up, because I was going to cross that bridge down the road. The waters. Due to security concerns. Things to kind of get started in September, or you can approach that. But that's alright, it's out there now. So, I think, you know, we're going to have to come up with some other idea.
So, again, I just wanted to include some photos of some examples of what we're talking about, whether it's berming or plants that grow up essentially a trellis and can sort of create some of those smaller group areas within the courtyard. Plenty of different ideas for TBLs, whether it's a sundial or otherwise. Last page is, obviously, amphitheaters, there's ideas about different sensory type things, whether it's wind sculptures or others. That's my piece of the presentation on Bear Road.
Questions?
Curious why the addition on the back of the building isn't squared off on the left-hand side?
On the left side, you're saying, over here? Yeah, when you, this whole roof line pitches, and so, it's catching water and directing water in a particular fashion, so it sort of reacts to that. You'll see, we can, if I go back to. There's some elements, there's some sort of common themes around the building where we sort of have these angular pieces on the outside. Those are essentially like reading nooks, you could almost call them, within the classroom, so some bonus space within the classroom. So, it's starting to create sort of a theme or a language, architectural language around the building, just to create a building that, you know, these, honestly, these one-story, very flat, long buildings are difficult, and so, our fear is that we start to look like a strip mall or something, and so, we've spent a lot of time thinking about what is this building saying about the district and what is it. And so we've spent a lot of time thinking about what is this building saying about the district and what is it? They're interesting buildings to work with. Okay. Any other Bear Road specific questions?
All right, so now we're going to trans, move into our roof phase four. We did present to the board some ago, a good portion of this, so some of these slides will move through.
Rather quickly.
Can Allen Road, and it doesn't show up well. I'll just run through this quick. Areas that are being replaced is basically the. And infrared scans, a kind of a look at the roof. This area, I just put about $5,000 in just this pad. Bear Road, it's the, basically. For all areas that we did not do, when we did the previous roof replacement over there. Well, well past their use for life. Junior high. Everything but the auditorium, what we just did and the two gyms. These roofs, especially the. Kind of a look at some of the wear. Roofs again are at least 29 years old. Run through those, those numbers group. Real quick, as you can see on the roof, it's just a little under one bit. Junior high. And I want to kind of move into a couple of different things. As you'll see from the last presentation, Bear Road is now on there. Bear Road's roof has. Talk about Bear Road. Bear Road's roof has two years left on warranty. We just. Red scanning. Itself, the roof is getting into insulation. Those we can address under the warranty and we will do that. But it's hooked at that with the time left on the. So what, if this does go through, the board does. A 25-year warrant. Everything's all set and done. Building, new roof, it would be good to go in that building for minimum. Help, it would be the entire roof. We have to do some additional, some roof work regardless, because of some of the additions that came proposed in the project. So it would be basically a, you know, full replacement plus whatever the additions are. Now, the, the, the thing with this that we'll have to do if this is approved. We'll write into that. Do that roof, we'll do that one as. The rest of the roofs on the project, though. See the approval, we would. Start these projects. So that's, Bear Road's number was 2.1. All that work. Now, as we got talking about these roofs, there are some incidental costs. One of the problems that, that we've had is. Panascourts, these panascourts. They're fixed or. So since Mr. Tatham was here. Can see they are imperable. Don't play any schools. Ousing in this project, place those is. Just got a, an estimate today. Sent that to Paul, we're going to have our. Paul would be, would be done. Yes, that would become competition grade. I think some of the questions are, you know, right now, is do we keep the fence the same height? Can we lower that fence? Some of those things, but it would be basically tear six courts out, book six courts back in for competition.
Great community asset.
Oh, yeah. The community still uses it. They still play over there, Tom, as bad as it is. So I think. So again, just to summarize the whole project itself, total cost of the project is just about. The estimated. Probably were very conservative there. Estimated building aid of seven, just under eight million, remaining project cost of just under two million. And I think the recommendation to the board is.
I had a question on this because we vote on this later tonight. Remember reading the vote later, it says a lot about the. Building aid. What's the cost of the taxpayer? Thought I read that. That's what I was worried about. Okay.
Uh, you'll have a couple that are probably ten. You'll have a good gap on every roof under warranty. So tentative timeline, um, we're asking the board for approval tonight. Forty-five day notice. Will be on September 28th. Of that day, so we. We would submit to SCD right after that. One thing I do want to say is because of the time with the, um. How Valenspinan to. So they can submit it right after that and start that, that block picking. SCD has changed some of the things in their approval. They're starting to use city bosi. There is an RFP that's going out for third-party architects to do approvals for them. Paul and I talk, it's not something I think right now we. But maybe, you know, if everything aligns right and things happen quicker than we think, maybe it's something we, we. Right now, though, I think we go in the queue and we just wait. Then we shoot for July 1st or 14th. Any questions on the roof? All right, and then real quick, I just want to touch on some of the, some of the things we've done in. Did some asbestos removal in the hallways, it needs. Just about double the. Up against stairway paint. Backing and, uh, pave the path. Would be good to be all. I've done that a little more. Everybody coming in the main. Conferences there. Think that's going to speed up the process, they figure. How kind of excited about, about that. I think that'll be a, a good thing in the law march for, for over there. Uh, we did conduct staff incident command training with all the administrators, which was great turnout. I was amazed. We had three troopers. Had armored lawn here as well and. Thought it was, uh, if. Follow-ups, and that comes from News Channel 9. I think out of anything, hopefully we opened up some lines of communication departments. Hopefully foster a better relationship. District wiring project is, is wrapping up. The installs are all done and all the buildings are finished mainstream.
Other phase to that wiring project or was it just the one?
Nope, that's it. That was just those, those.
I know we had a couple of phases of the technology plan. I didn't know if there was.
I know technology is working diligently to get the main street up and running. And I'm not going to read everything on the list, but is there, are there any questions on anything?
What you doing that part of the night over there?
As what I do everywhere, it's kind of patch and cut, patch and cut. It looks like a quilt everywhere. Unfortunately, you know, and I'm saying this to Don, you could give me $200,000, $300,000 a year. Probably still couldn't keep up. I think on some of these projects. So basically every year I go around in the spring, I pick the worst of, the worst and I spend as much as I can to fix what I can.
Don, stay right there.
Okay.
Have you explained. Later on the agenda is the approval of the district, district-wide safety plan. As long as you're here. Why don't you give us your comments there and then we'll approve it later, but let's save some time with you right now.
Okay, so, so district-wide safety plans, how last year the state kind of mandated a whole different format of how those were. We took the time, you know, we. Really tailored that to, to the district. That covers everything from, you know, your, your lockout bag, your lockout, you know, lock-in lockdown, shelter in place, all of those. But on top of that, it also had you, you have certain. What you see on the district website is a very watered-down, condensed version of buildings that have much more detail. Probably each building's plan, you know, minimum. Basically walks through, um, the building were to, for some. Well, how would that, who would they go to be in charge, what would be the person there that would follow that? Third, knowing what to do. Health issues, how to deal with those, depending on the severity. It's a, it's a very detailed document. Right now, I'm in the process. Here that it was not in there. Slide on the building that seems to be. More and more, and there are certain rules and things that need to be followed. So I do think that. Kind of talking about how to deal with those situations. And the state has once again changed how that submission's going to go, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. We'll start putting it in, we'll, we'll see how it works. But those have to be in by the first of September, I believe, if you're there. You know, and the nice part was, I, I have to say that. Fire at the junior highs, one of the first things, you know. Your emergency plans are addressed and I would. Buildings are very good about working the road. And that'll be a yearly thing. We'll come back every year, you know, and ask you to read about them. But like I said, I think we've got most things covered. Part one is reviewing them as part of the assessments on Thursday. Any thoughts or additions they, they like?
Thank you, John. Any questions on that? Thank you. Thanks, John Paul. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Next item on the agenda, comments from the audience. We have three speakers this evening, Amanda Segou on the TAG program. Hi Amanda, once again, the three-minute limit?
Yes, thank you again, everyone, for your time. I know everyone's had long days. We all know the background of the TAG program, so I just wanted to cut out two points since the last meeting. First of all, on July 22nd, that was the second letter we got. And it again stated that there was no certification program in the region, which was not the case on June 21st. I did tell. On August 1st, I did receive an email from St. John Fisher and Nazareth. But there are some problems there unfortunately. I've been in contact with three separate administrators at Nazareth College and no one has. There is a fourth administrator that's not gotten back to me. Perhaps he has heard from them and I hope that that is the case. The other problem with this is that St. John Fisher apparently was contacted and they do not have a gifted program. St. John's in New York does. So I thought perhaps that was some sort of an easy mix-up. But my problem with that is this statement that says both institutions shared that coursework for tag certification was offered only as an as-needed basis by school districts in the Rochester. That statement can't possibly be true because why would St. John's in Queens, which has almost 100 talents to be gifted, K-38 programs, have anything to do with Rochester? Clearly, they weren't contacted and St. John Fisher doesn't have a program. It's just frustrating as a parent, as a taxpayer, to get a letter from the district that has these statements that clearly. So my second point is the one I really want to drive home here. In September 2015, there was an internal posting, which I, I'm very appreciative that there was, for this position. And I believe that is when they found the teacher who taught last year, who was amazing. There was no internal position posted from 2016 to 17, which means there couldn't possibly have been a search because that would. So there has been no search for this teacher since September 2015. My problem is how are we cutting a program? At least on 2015 and for me. My opinion, as soon as, before was told, you know, told that he couldn't do it anymore, a new search started. The search found him. Now, now we don't have anyone. Now we need a new search. Did a search in 2015, let's just cut the program. The kids deserve it. If you guys do a search and can't find, I'll go away. Like, I understand that it might be hard to find someone. I honestly don't think we've tried. I honestly think that we need, I still haven't had any clarity. I've asked twice what websites, the letter stated that what some website they used to generate ads. I, I don't, which one is that? You can't find. I know it is hard to find archives. In position and several other. It's not even on our website. It's not on our website. So thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Second is Jean Vanette.
Hi, good evening. I too am very frustrated with how this process has gone. My son and I see this happening in this district. It's very concerning to me. Two-year 2015, posting date, September 15th. Effective date, October 9th, 2015. Since then, nothing has been done. My son was in fifth grade that year. Late spring two thousand sixteen, received a letter from the district inviting Andrew to participate in the tag program for the upcoming so year. We went to the meeting where it was explained to us seventh grade program for students who are above average academically. Excellent experience for them. Now, one year later, from the recruitment letter, we receive a letter stating the termination of the program. To the lack of being able to find a source by search to place in two Our children started the program in the fall of two thousand sixteen. We're going to have this program for the following year. We should not have started because taught them to start something they cannot finish. Your hate created a wonderful learning environment for them. Great experience and I'm very thankful. Mission regulations provide, and this provide, and this is from the New York State article, for the possibility of an incidental teaching assignment, currently an out-of-title assignment of not more than point two, which is five periods a week. Of a full teaching order, continue So a teacher in our district could teach what? Why can't you allow this group of students to finish? I beg of you that. My son sat here with us tonight, Andrew, while the students were present. He's over to me and says, I took that survey. And the question was asked without any room comments. And my son says, and the answer is yes. At the very end, they asked for student comments. And he tells me, there was a place for comments at the end. Son Andrew, Peter Gill, Thomas, Thomas Zostowski, and Ben Braun, all wrote about their tag class, positive effect it had on all of them. And it was the best part of their school day when they had I'm asking for my son and for every other child that tag program to be given the opportunity to finish in two thousand seventeen, their seventh grade year, like they were promised.
Thank you, Jean. Aug Vanette, please.
Good evening. I'm sorry I haven't been able to be at the meetings on Monday nights. I have a part-time Jean and friends are up to the task. So I'm here one last time. As you mentioned, she's been in the district for twenty-four years. She's a graduate from nineteen eighty-seven on the our law principal, Allen Road High School. Nephews. Always felt like that we could trust what the district was doing and that, that everything about that job. And I'm very surprised to be there tonight. Funny. Today I'm reading the Sunday newspaper and Drew grabs an advertisement for Dick's Sporting Goods or whatever. First knee here. And he sees a really great price on a pair of sneakers. What, what kind of sneaks were they? Whatever, NMDs, KDs, whatever they are. So I said, Drew, yeah, that's a great price, but be careful that you don't get baited and switched. And he said, what's that? Well, you're going to go in there and you're going to think that you're getting these great sneakers. They're out of stock. And lo and behold, I got a way more expensive pair to sell you. Says, is that kind of like what happened with tag? Not, not really. Then I thought about it a little bit. In May, when it was time to vote, we were promised tag program. There was no indication that we were not going to have tag. So when I went and voted yes, I was buying tag. When I drove my mother-in-law for offers to vote yes. Voting for tag. When I called my mom and my friends, told them to vote yes. Understanding that we were I feel like we got baited and switched. Now, this might be the right thing for the district. I don't know why you think eliminating tag. But maybe it is. But you can't do the right thing the wrong way. And this process has been completely watched. Not too late to do the right thing. Anybody in that meeting where they discussed eliminating tag would have said, what about the seventh graders? They're going to have parents and kids that are going to be upset that they started in sixth grade and didn't get to finish. Anybody in that room should have known that. Somebody in that room would have been able to say, well, I guess we got to keep it for one more year. Please reconsider.
Thank you. Next item, board committee reports, comments, any have any committee meetings yet, have?
Well Connie and I met and we set up the schedule for the policy committee. And the first
Five o'clock? Anything else, anybody? Paul, you're going to gear up legislative by assuming committee? Probably should do that, okay. All right. Appreciate that. Vanette, anything from you?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I would just like to publicly thank John Wiznicka, owner of JPW Companies, for installing our new scoreboards at the, in the gym at CNS High School. I have a photo here. Next thing that I have, I'm really, really excited. I had a group of administrators to and other districts in the country. That's all geared up and we talked about it. And then they have a follow-up with, I got two folks coming and meeting with them this past spring. What I'm going to share with you right now is the result of the work a group of people coming credit to those people, John John Wilczynski, Jen Sullivan, who was one of our consultant teachers, who's no one The Goldberg and Alicia. What I'm going to pass out to you is an amazing deck that ties together our vision, our mission, the, our focus areas that have guided professional development. We're going to our community groups have it available. Come around. So this is kind of the unveiling tonight and we will be sharing with our administrators next week, talking about what those focus areas mean. Article for the dispatch that will come out at the end of this month with some comments about this. And I really believe that this is kind of going to tie the pieces of the puzzle together and will remain our focus for the next couple of years. We will be at a point where we'll be having advisory council reanalyze our tightening that up as well, but what we're all about.
Anything else? Routine action items, five A. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education, July twenty-four. B, consideration of classification and school placement of disabled students certified by the District Committee on Special Education. C, consideration of classification placement of preschool disabled students certified by the District Committee on Preschool Special Education. E, consideration of a contract award. The detail there is a bid for electric equipment. And the recommended action is to award contract two zero one eight dash zero five to B and H Photo in the amount of seventeen thousand, thirty-six dollars, forty cents, as the lowest responsible bidder meeting the specification. So I will entertain a motion to take five A, B, C, and D as a group for approval. Put the motion, Mr. Murzio, second, Mr. Harrington. All in favor? Discussion action items, A, B, C really go together. A is the environmental quality review resolution for the upcoming roof projects. A lot of whereas is in there. You can tell, written by a lawyer. Nothing personal, Larry. B, the authorization of the proposition to hold a meeting on September twenty-eighth, special district meeting, for the purpose of voting on a proposition for reconstruction, renovation, and construction of certain district facilities. That's again for the roof project and all the language and all the buildings and all the costs. And C, the notice that will actually appear in the newspapers. Forty-five day limit to notify the public of the vote. So I would again entertain, no, you need a roll call Connie. Where do you need a roll call?
I need a roll call, roll call on B and C.
B and C both, okay. So I have to do them separately then. Six A, state environmental quality review resolution, a motion to approve. Scanlon, Ms. McDonald on the second, all in favor? B, the authorization of a proposition on the ballot for September twenty-eighth special meeting, to roll call vote Connie?
I think I need a motion.
Oh, motion and second, would be a good idea, wouldn't it? Okay, I'll take this. Your motion to approve this. Mr. Harrington, second, Ms. Scanlon, okay. Now we'll do the roll call.
Michael Schustak.
Aye.
Michael Murzio.
Yes.
Paul Farfalia. George Harrington.
Aye.
Michael Leone. Aaron McDonald.
Yes.
Mary Scanlon.
And C, notice of a special meeting. Again, the public notice for that very same vote, motion to approve that. Is there such? Ms. Scanlon, second, Ms. McDonald, all in favor?
No.
Sorry, roll call. Let me again.
Michael Schustak.
Aye.
Michael Murzio.
Aye.
Paul Farfalia. George Harrington.
Aye.
Michael Leone. Aaron McDonald.
Yes.
And Mary Scanlon.
Yes.
The yeses have it. D, recommendation to create two-point-zero full-time equivalent elementary teachers. One-point-zero at Sisro Elementary and one-point-zero at Letcher Elementary and one-point-zero full-time equivalent teaching assistant. E, recommendation to approve the district-wide safety plan, which John commented on. F is a recommendation to amend what was done at the prior meeting that wasn't done correctly with a gift from the North Syracuse Education Foundation for the tennis coach. Rather that the item was accepted for the tennis programs other than the coach. D, surplus of non-marketable and marketable equipment. Anything there, Don, of any value to anybody?
Oh, the bosses, we're going to auction those.
An auction goes right off, that auction's international or whatever it is. Okay. Yeah. Stock back there, somebody might want, but I doubt that seriously.
Yes, the auction proceeds.
Revenue, yeah.
What we get at auction?
Oh, sure.
Be curious to see what we get. So I will take a motion then to approve D, E, F, and G as a group. Mr. Leone and Mr. Farfalia, all in favor? Aye. Next item is retirement. We're going to note the retirement of some people. Holly Basser, the music teacher with thirty-six years of service. Tony Pontius, foreign language teacher with twenty years of service. Julia Chilson, custodial worker one with fourteen years. Christopher, help me, Elia, Uliya, Elia. Motor equipment operator, thirty-two years. So we wish all these people many long and healthy and happy years of retirement. Seven A, instructional personnel. Seven B, support staff personnel. Questions, any need for discussions of any of these? Motion to approve those two as a group. Mr. Harrington, Mr. Leone, all in favor? C, motion for, to go to executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the North Syracuse Education Association and transportation bargaining units. To review the employment record of four individuals and to receive an update on five legal matters relative to potential litigation with no action to follow, is there a motion for executive session? Mr. Murzio, Mr. Leone. Thank you, we'll go off to executive session.